Welcome. Hi, everyone. Welcome to the meeting. Seventh official call of meeting to order. We're gonna have the budget review with Kyla and Tanya. And then if you could hold your questions till the end, that would be phenomenal. Take it away.
Sure. Well, welcome. Everybody hear me all right? There's several handouts out on the table that I went over at the board meeting. So feel free to ask any questions about those as well. I'm gonna be reviewing the last page on the budget first, which is the revenue page. And then Tanya will review a summary of the appropriations. So just starting from the top. The board voted a few years ago to have retained fund balance if they wish to do so. They voted at the last meeting to put 293,109 for the 2324 column. Catastrophic aid is aid that is for special ed students that may be placed out of district that reach a cap over three and a half times the tuition. We are not, we can sometimes recoup for that. The state is supposed to give us 100% for that special ed aid. They have not given us more than 60% over the past, I'd say, decade. But we do not have any students right now that we are thinking that will make that cap. For adequacy, you'll see that's gone up a little bit. That is not like most districts, so it's just based on their formula. Anything from your free and reduced lunch population, your ADM, your proficiencies in math and reading, and several other factors go into that formula. A security grant is something we had a few years ago that is at zero right now. National Forest Reserve is $2,000. Medicaid is any money that we recoup for kids that are Medicaid eligible in special education. So it could be for certain services like a rehabilitative assistant, nursing, physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech, et cetera. So we are projecting about the same as this year. Regular ed tuition, so that's your tuition students coming from out of district. So that has gone up quite a bit. We have had more parents wanting to tuition their students to Plymouth Elementary from other districts outside the SAU and some within. So that has happened. Special ed tuition, so you run two behavioral programs out of Plymouth Elementary School. So that is the tuition of students coming in from out of district. You have in-districts kids getting serviced more so than out-of-district kids right now coming into those programs. Preschool assist, so the district is obligated to service any student that is between the ages of three and five that have special ed, special education. So preschool assist is the program that allows for collaborative services within the district for special ed for that age group. So that is revenue that is built back into Plymouth. Earning on investments is one. Pep tuition, so that's the preschool tuition as well. Reimbursement services, so you, right now, that's your ELL, English Language Learners, better way to say that. We at Plymouth Elementary School have one full-time person, but you don't have one full-time person that requires to be here all the time. So we bill out the other districts that they go to. So you'll see that salary in the regular budget, and then you get 50,000 back from the other districts that receive English language services. Voted from fund balance, so that's zero right now, but you'll notice that's your capital improvement. Capital reserve, I apologize for that. Capital reserve, that gets voted in every year. So you'll see that's a warrant article as well. So if that gets voted on at the district meeting, that will be 50,000 in there. Transfer from capital reserve fund is zero. Title II reimbursement is one. IDEA, that's your federal special education services grant. So that is 140,000, about, that's the same as this past year. Title I reimbursement, 80,000. Food service revenue is 195,000. Then you see your total school revenue and credits, your district appropriation, which Tanya will review that number in more detail. And then at the bottom, we do put in your change in district assessment, the percentage it's up, that's with the revenue, and your dollar change in net assessed valuation per thousand. Tanya?
So rather than the slideshow this year, we're going for a much shorter version for those of you who've come multiple years in a row. So I am going to work off page 11, which is the summary page for appropriations. If you are new to public school accounting, each area within the budget has a function area listed by account number on the left. And then the function area title is the next column over. We've got some historical information, and I'm gonna be working mostly off of the proposed budget column and the column that's titled difference farther over on the right. So in the 1100 account, which is regular ed instruction, we are proposing a budget of $3,654,039. That is up about, you will notice, $255,000. I would like to point out to you, I can summarize where that increase is coming from. 193,000 of that is in various salary lines across regular ed instruction. Regular ed instruction does include all of the Unified Arts or Specialists as well as our classroom teachers, okay? There's also an increase in supplies of $11,000 in that line item and an additional $41,333 for printed media as we convert to new reading programs and update our instructional materials. The next function area is 1200. That is the special education function area. We are proposing a budget based on our current students. So that's how we figure that number on. We don't, we have to, we have, I've been trained well to plan for actual students in the building, okay? And we are proposing a budget of 1,959,000. And that is an increase of 131,000. $65,000 of that increase is in salaries based on the CBA, just as the increase in the regular ed tuition went up, or regular ed line and function area went up, okay? The next function area is 1410, which is co-curricular. That includes both athletics and all of our co-curricular activities, whether it's TSA or Nano Rymo or the play. And that is up to, we're proposing $190,000. And that is an increase of $58,413. That is almost exclusively increased in the payment for that. Based, those salaries are decided on through the CBA. That's negotiated between the Teachers Association and the School Board. Next function area is 1840. That is our preschool program. And you will notice that we are proposing 234,534. That is an increase of 11,664. That increase is because we are proposing that these preschool teachers' position go from 80% up to 100% time based on the amount of work that goes into running our preschool program. The next function area is 2120, which is guidance and assessment services. That is up to 123,701, which is an increase of 2,751. And that is all attributed to the CBA increase, little bit in supplies as well. So there's a little combination there of two things. The next function area is 2130, which is health services, which is our school nurse, who is a contracted service provider through Spear. That is a proposed budget of 114,276, which is an increase of 17,754. And that increase is based on the contract that we have with Spear and the addition of a management position into that contract. Stay with me. Next up is function area 2140, which is psychological services. We are proposing a budget in that function area of 110,710. That is a decrease of 15,290. And that's due to a staff change. So we went from having a contracted service provider to someone who is a Plymouth School District employee, and that staff change created that change. Next up is 2150, which is speech services. And, hold on one second, I wanna make sure I'm on my right line item. That is, we are proposing 242,896. And that is an increase of 9,309. And that is almost exclusively attributed to the change in the collective bargaining agreement that was agreed upon a year ago. Then we have function area 2160, which is OT and PT services. We are proposing 124,000. And that is a decrease of 3,158. Both of, all of the staff associated with that function area are contracted service providers. So we do not, they are not Plymouth Elementary School employees. We work to employ subcontractors for that. And that is again based on our current students and the needs within those areas, okay? Support services is, we put a dollar in there, no change there. Then there is 2210, which is improvement of instruction. And we have proposed the same amount of money there that we have, that we used, well, it's a little bit more, the same that we adopted last year, 51,455. Next up is function area 2220, which is library services. We are proposing a budget of 116,111, which is an increase of 5,152. There's a small increase in supplies, but the bulk of that is an increase in the CBA based on the agreement with the Teachers Union. Then we have school board services, which is 2310. And that, we are proposing 31,048. That is an increase of 1,500 due to the increased cost to have the audits done for the district to make sure that our books are well managed and well run. So that's just the cost of doing business. Next is function area 2320, which is SAU services, is all the services that come out of the SAU office to support our building. And we are proposing 342,370, which is a decrease of 14,720. And that is due to the fact that the percentage of our use of those services based across the district has gone down. It's not that we're getting any less from the district, it's just that the equation that's used to figure out that means that our percentage is down a little bit. We're still getting the exact same services from the SAU that we have always gotten. Next function area is 2330, which is our technology coordination. And we are proposing 61,084, which is an increase of 1,137. And that is due to just a contract increase. 2410 is the principal's office, so it's everything coming out of my office and front office as well as Mrs. Carey's office. And we are proposing 379,374, which is an increase of 11,394. And that is a combination of contracts and increase of supply costs. So you'd be amazed at what, well, everyone in the room knows that it costs quite a bit. Next is function area 2500, which is financial accounting. That, we put a dollar into that function area always. Then we have operating and building services. So this is, let's see, that is, we're proposing 671,174, which is an increase of 767. 2700 is transportation. We are proposing 284,434, which is an increase of 131. Support services, we are proposing 39,499. That is an increase of 2,545. And that is our school resource officer, who is basically a contracted service provider through the police department. We split that position between here and the high school. The school board voted on that prior to my arrival, I think about a year prior to my arrival. Then we have function area 3110, which is food service. You'll notice that we are proposing 10,003 there, which is an increase of 9,999. That is due to the increase in food costs. So long ago, when I was on the, so 15-ish years ago, this school and many of the schools in SAU 48 ran at a deficit for food. The program couldn't support itself, which is one of the reasons we went to having a company run our food service. And they've done a great job of keeping costs very affordable. But with the recent increase in food costs and labor costs, both, that, that has changed for next year. Building improvement services, so we are not proposing any major building improvement whatsoever. What will, so we're proposing 1. That doesn't, as you know, if you've been following along with us, we are going to do some projects, but using ESER funds to get some projects, not out of the operating budget. Then function area 5100, which is debt service. We're proposing 31,963, which is no change. And then 5251 is the capital reserve fund. Historically, the board and the district has, or at least in the last three years, has moved 50,000 if there was leftover money into the capital reserve fund. But that is not, we don't go into the operating budget, budgeting that. Then you'll notice the next two lines on the summary do not have function areas beside them. They are health insurance summary and dental insurance summary. A couple of years ago, it was clear to us that because we're such a small school, not regionally, but in the scheme of the nation, line items are very easily associated with certain individuals. And it was decided, I don't know if it was by IRSA or just best practice, that we would, instead of having the health insurance costs really associated with specific line items, AKA people, that we would just do a summary of health insurance costs so that people's personal information was not as readily available. And what we are proposing for health insurance is 1,316,586, which is an increase of 167,288. What I know about that is that that is a 3.7 percentage increase, okay? And that is the guaranteed maximum rate. It does not mean that we will use all that, but that's the guaranteed maximum that we would pay for health insurance for folks who take that. And then dental insurance, 36,993, which, is that, those numbers right? That doesn't look right because...
Increase in 10,1200?
Yeah. I don't think that number's right as I'm looking at this.
10,270.
So...
The difference, the budgeted amount would be correct, but the difference is what, where the matter is.
Yeah.
But the increase is...
But the guaranteed maximum rate is 1.5%.
One and a half percent is the change in the rating.
Okay. So we do not have, we're not, any special revenue from daycare, and we are not anticipating federal funds. The food service funds, we are proposing 195,000, which is an increase of 30,000. And I already spoke about what that increase is. I'm gonna ask Dan why there are two numbers for food service. So that's my first question.
The number at the bottom, the 195,000 number, that's the appropriation for the actual operation of the program. That's what, that's what we're gonna pay cafe services to staff and buy the supplies and provide the meals. The 10,000 in the 3100 function, that's the subsidy that the district is gonna have to come up with because the program won't support itself financially any longer. As Tanya mentioned, for a number of years, the programs at the two largest schools in the SAU, specifically Plymouth Elementary and Plymouth High School, have broken even. They haven't operated at a loss as all the smaller schools in the SAU. This is a more common line item, the 3100 subsidy. But between costs of food, costs of labor, and the other challenges running the program, and the desire not to push, there have been recent price increases to the students that are paying for lunch, the desire not to push that number significantly higher. So it remains at a formal level is why the 10,000 subsidy is there in the higher line, the 3100 function. If that doesn't make sense, please let me know.
So just to finish up, you'll notice the grand total is 10,321,327. And that is an increase of 643,413. Right, we'll, we'll fix the increase. I do wanna point out that of that increase, 344,440 is an increase due to the collective bargaining agreement, which supports the hard work that our teachers do in this building. So that is definitely the bulk of the increase. We are not proposing any changes in staffing besides that preschool position, and we are not proposing any additions of any programs.
I just want to put, the 643 is accurate. It's the subtraction of the two lines, the two cells. It's not a summation of the differences higher above.
And then just with capital improvements, the board did hold on any improvements being put into the budget for next year. We are using ESER grants to upgrade the HVAC systems, and so that is not reflected in here. So that, that is a big project that will happen this summer that you don't have to raise. So that was part of the CIP that has been in place for a long time, so...
And that is something that we had discussed bonding five or six years ago. So the fact that we waited was a good move if we can use ESER funds for that.
Yep, we do have to, yep. We do have to use those funds. With that...
Let's open it up for questions.
Yes?
I'll ask one question. Would you come, Mike, coming up to the mic and identify yourself, sir?
So earlier on, you mentioned that there are students who tuition from other towns. How many of them are there, and what is the rate that they pay?
So as far as there's different rates for teachers, that's something new in the collective bargaining agreement. So the teachers pay 30% of the tuition. Go ahead.
All right, so there's, there's three different structures. The first one is the school board in Plymouth has had a longstanding agreement with the school board in Ellsworth at a flat rate of 17,000 per student. For all others, with the exception of the third example I'm gonna mention in a minute, the tuition rate is the prior year's cost per student. So this year, that number is about 22, forgive me for not having the exact number, it's approximately 22,000. And that's, that's at the formula that the state calls the average cost per student. So the state takes certain numbers out of the total cost, like bond cost, et cetera. But the tuition rate is set for average individuals at prior year's cost per student. The third option is that in the most recent collective bargaining agreement, the people who are faculty in this school can bring their children into the school for 35% of the prior year's cost per student. So those are the three different rates that are out there for tuition. And I assume you're not, we're not talking about preschool here, we're just talking about K-38.
I believe in the last school board meeting, we had talked about the administrative position that Spear was placing on the school district with the, for the nursing staffing. Has that been discussed with Spear about why that came about and calculations of that?
I'm gonna have Dan answer this question, he's in process of that right now.
So we, we did, we did, we were informed by Spear that they were adding this position to the contract that services the entire SAU. We tried, because of the late notice we received from them, we were already into the budget process for next year, we asked them to delay it a year, and we were told no. So the two pieces I wanna communicate are, number one, I think part of your question was how is that position spread out across the SAU? And we broke it out based on a population determination. So if 20% of the students in the SAU that that position is servicing are in this school, 20% of the cost of that position is coming to this school, in the high school. It's a little bit more than 30% of the students in the SAU are at the high school, so that budget has about 30% of the cost, et cetera. What we did do was form a working group with, a lot of the questions came up. Are we doing, are we performing nursing services in the most cost-effective and efficient manner for the SAU? And we're actively working, we have a team of about six or seven people, both Spear people and from within the SAU, are working to build what we hope will be a more cost-effective model for delivering nursing services where they're essential within the SAU. Unfortunately, it won't be in place for this coming fiscal year, but our hope is that by the, by the time we go through this process next year, we'll have a much more cost-effective model in place that we can work towards reducing those costs.
That's all, I have a few questions. What's the average increase from collective bargaining? Yeah, I mean, usually in a collective bargaining agreement, they negotiate 3% or 3 and 1/2% or...
So, unfortunately, I don't, so there's two, there's two, there's two components to your question, right? In a bargaining agreement, there's what's called the matrix, which is saying if someone has this many years of experience or this level of educational attainment, this is the, and then the following year, they go down to what's called the next step. So if someone's in their eighth year here, next year they'll be step nine. You've got the step increase, which is about 3, 3 and 1/2%.
I have it. So it's 4% plus step.
4% plus step.
Yeah. It's 22, 23, 23, 24 is 3 and 1/2 plus step. So that's next year's budget.
So the budget we're looking at is 3 and 1/2?
Yep. 24, 25 is 3% plus step. 25, 26 is 3% plus step.
For what it's worth, social security adjusted 6% this year, so...
Yeah. The steps, those, those are all annual, the steps?
Yes.
I know sometimes those are merit-based, you know, so we get...
So there's a base, there's a base 15, base 36, or bachelor's plus 36, or masters is the same column, masters plus 15, masters plus 30, masters plus 45, and then it goes down to step 14. That makes sense?
Yep, it does. You mentioned there were no new positions or conversions of part-time to full-time except for the preschool. That's correct? I'm trying to understand the co-curricular increase, which is... I'm trying to understand the co-curricular increase, which is, you know, looking at the summary sheet, that one's particularly high, just percentage basis, that's a plus thirty-one percent year over year. I'm trying to understand how, how did co-curricular salary costs go up that much without new positions or conversions to part-time to full-time?
So that's, again, part of this collective bargaining agreement, and the co-curricular has a different formula than the teacher raises.
Okay.
So all the co-curricular positions, so that is the coaching and, and just theater and stuff like that, has been changed from different categories to, they've been grouped together in like level one, level two, level three, level four. And basically, I'll just give you a quick example, student council advisor, TSA advisor, theater director, yearbook advisor, baseball coach, or in for the twenty-three, twenty-four, it's thirty-five hundred, which is a significant increase for some of those positions. Level two is like a grade aid advisor. Math team, their stipend now is twenty-five hundred. Level three, student council assistant, theater assistant director is sixteen twenty-five for next year. Level four is baseball co-assisted, field hockey assistant coach, et cetera. That's eleven twenty-five. It was, you know, those folks that were in that level four were just five hundred stipend before, so those have gone up significantly, because there was difficulty getting coaches and folks to do those positions for the lower stipends. So that is significantly higher.
Okay, so is it just a complete rebalancing of the way that...
Complete restructure.
Yeah.
So those were kind of expected additional costs coming out of the CBA negotiations system?
Correct.
Can I check? And then I think my, one more question, which is, so we've, let's take this, actually two-part question. So we've been putting fifty thousand dollars a year for some time into a capital reserve budget line for general building maintenance. Do we know what the balance of that capital reserve is?
Sure. At the end of the last fiscal year, June thirtieth, it was one hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. And in December, fifty thousand dollars that was built into the budget for the current year was added. So as of right now, there'd be a little over one hundred and fifty-six thousand plus some interest.
Thank you.
Yep.
It looks like, so it's the second part of the question. It, it looks, what I've heard, and actually even what Tanya said, is the intention of the way that, that capital reserve fund is supposed to work is, it's supposed to come from unused funds at the end of the year. Is that, that's the intention of how we're...
That's the mechanics of it. So once the, once the voters, so I'm going to, I'm going to correct a little bit of what the way Tanya characterized it, okay? The board doesn't vote to put that fifty thousand dollars in. The public sees a warrant article saying if there's fund balance on July one, the first, any fund balance that exists, once the public approves that warrant article, the first fifty thousand dollars goes into that fund. So before the board has an opportunity to either A, retain any fund balance, or if in the absence of the board retaining any fund balances, they've been authorized, additional fund balance would go back to the...
Offset the tax rate.
To offset the tax rate, exactly. But dollar one of any fund balance on July one, up to fifty thousand dollars, automatically goes into that once approved, once that warrant article is approved by the public, at the district meeting.
Okay, that, that makes sense. That fits my understanding of the intent. However, when I look at the actual expenses or the adopted budget, I, I'm consistently seeing that fifty thousand on those line items, which I understand, because we take that fifty thousand and we put it in there. I'm trying to understand, does that mean, will, the number that we raise when we set the tax rate, are we pre-including that fifty thousand dollars when we're raising that amount?
No, we're not, which is why on the proposed budget, the second to the last column, there's a zero, there's a zero. So the tax rate for the proposed budget does not include that fifty thousand dollars, because we don't know that there will be a fund balance. When the tax rate is actually built and revenues are revisited in the fall, both if the fund balance exists, both the appropriation will be increased by the fifty thousand, as will the proposed revenue. So the only effect of that fifty thousand dollar deposit into the capital reserve account would be to reduce any available fund balance in the fall.
Let me see if I follow that, though. I'm looking at the adopted budget column, right? And so this is the number, the nine million, two hundred, actually maybe the problem line, is the amount that we, that we raise and appropriate.
Well, so, no, it's the budget that was adopted, because that article was approved last year and the fund balance existed. So the appropriation and the revenue were both increased by fifty thousand at year end due to the fund balance existing.
So it's taken from the prior year, not from the current year?
Correct. Prior year meaning if the article is approved next month at the district meeting.
Yeah.
For the twenty-two, twenty-three year, which is the current year.
Yes.
If there's fund balance on July one at the start of the twenty-three, twenty-four year that we're contemplating here.
Yes.
That fifty thousand dollars would be added to both the appropriation and the revenue page. So it would have no effect on the tax rate, other than there being less in a fund balance returned to offset the tax rate.
Right, right.
That makes sense.
But it's not, we are not using that fifty thousand dollars to increase the amount we're...
No, we're not. No, to take money out of the, you would need another warrant article approved by the public to take money out of the account.
Well, I've read that, I've read that warrant article like three times, and the wording on it is very, very concerning. I'm surprised that a lawyer approved it as written.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's language that comes strictly out of the DRA portal. Our lawyers didn't write it or approve it, the DRA wrote it.
I'm surprised by that. It's, it's very contradictory in my opinion. I think, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
What's the DRA?
Department of Revenue Administration. I apologize. That's the state agency that, among other things, sets tax rates.
So, if you don't, if there's no other questions, I could just review the warrant articles real quick. There are no collective bargaining agreements this year, so there's no support staff or teachers' contract to vote on. And really, it's pretty straightforward. Reports of agents and auditors, it's to establish a contingency fund that gives us some flexibility on spending. The fund balance to the capital reserve fund that we were just talking about, Article Three. And then Article Four is the operating budget, which is what we just reviewed with you. So no other changes from there. If you're comfortable with, with moving the budget forward, you can go ahead and vote on that as a warrant.
All right, so we need to vote to move the budget warrant articles as written to the district meeting.
So moved.
Second, then? All in favor of moving it?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you.
Great.
That concludes our meeting. Thank you for coming.
Yep, thank you.
Please come vote next month.
Yeah. Okay, I'll go back over.